Hi, everybody. Matt Belanger, Planning Director for the Town of Williston. This presentation is for the Williston Planning Commission in preparation for their March 15th, 2022 work session on the Taft Corners Form-Based Code. The intent of this presentation and the work session to follow on Tuesday, March 15th, is to gain some clear direction from commissioners on any remaining edits to the Form-Based Code prior to the transmittal of that code to the Select Board for their consideration. And we wanted to ask some questions of the Planning Commission and also summarize some facts and correct some misstatements that have been made throughout the public hearing process so the Planning Commission can give us feedback based on the facts about the code and the context in which it would be adopted. Here's a list of our work session topics. We'll go through each of these in the order that you see on the screen here. And when we do this at the March 15th Planning Commission meeting, each of these topics will be concluded with one or two survey questions that can serve as a starting point for any further Planning Commission discussion on edits to the Form-Based Code. Before we get started, just wanted to remind everybody of the team of professionals that's been helping us throughout this process, led by Jeffery Farrell Associates, but also all of the other folks you see in the white box on this slide. Some of the facts and information about the code we'll be presenting tonight come from the hard work of many of the individuals you see on the screen here. First topic is pitched roofs. As a reminder, we have a pitched roof requirement in the draft code with a few exemptions for solar-ready roofs and rooftop gardens or open space. The idea of pitched roofs as a requirement is to help combat some of the sameness of a lot of modern architecture and create a Taft Corners that is uniquely Williston. It also reflects something that is incentivized in the current Design Review Standards for Taft Corners. We did want to note, however, that there are some other architectural requirements in the draft code that will also help Williston stand out and be unique and help combat some of the boring sameness of a lot of architecture that's been developed in the last 10 years or so. The Commission has some options as it relates to pitched roofs in the code. You could decide that there's no change and the pitched roof requirement will remain as drafted in the code. You could ditch the pitch and remove the pitched roof requirement, or you can answer that you have another idea for this question and we can bring it up during our work session discussion. Our next topic is dooryard and required minimum dooryard width. We have dooryards in the Williston code as small as five feet and as large as seven feet, and we do have some flexibility as discussed on the slide here. Planning Commission comment about dooryards has been that five feet is too small. This chart identifies the street sections in which a five-foot dooryard is called for. Here's a map of the proposed required street types within the Form-Based Code area. In the purple and blue-colored streets on this map, their dooryard is seven feet deep already. On the other colored streets, it is a five-foot dooryard. And again, that five feet does not include the 24 to 36 inches of flexibility that are allowed within range of the required building line. And some comments from our professional team as it relates to dooryard depth. Codes our team has worked on in the past typically require a two-to-three-foot-deep dooryard. The five-to-seven-foot-deep dooryards were designed into the Williston code in response to Planning Commission feedback that a deeper dooryard was desired. However, this depth does increase the distance between buildings and begins to impact walkability of the overall streetscape. The question we'll be asking about dooryards during our work session is whether the dooryard depths should be changed at all. You have the option to say no change, increase all of the dooryards from five feet to seven feet, increase some of the dooryards from five feet to seven feet, or I have another idea, and we'll discuss that during our work session. The next topic is minimum and maximum building heights. As a reminder, in different parts of the Form-Based Code overlay district, we have minimum heights of two or three stories and maximum heights of three, four, or five stories, as shown on the table. The regulating plan map shows the different parts of the overlay district where the minimum heights are two or three stories and the maximum heights are three, four, or five stories. We've had varying testimony from the public and stakeholders on minimum and maximum building height and varying opinions among Planning Commission members. There are a number of elements of the vision plan that the Form-Based Code overlay district is based on that encourage the idea of higher minimum and maximum building heights. These include the ability to produce additional affordable housing, increased building and energy efficiency per dwelling unit, and increased tax base on a smaller footprint. So in our work session, we'll ask Commission members questions about whether they would like to change any of the minimum or maximum building heights in the draft Form-Based Code. Another element of building height is that the draft Form-Based Code only allows multi-story buildings. There has been testimony, particularly by representatives of Taft Corners Associates, that there's a desire to have flexibility to continue to allow some new single-story buildings to be constructed. It's worth noting that the current bylaws shown in this slide discourages single-story buildings and encourages multiple-story buildings as part of the design criteria. In the mixed-use residential zoning district near the Cottonwood project, multiple stories are in fact required for new buildings with a very limited exception for single-story buildings that have no more than 15% lot coverage. The way the town currently encourages multiple-story development can play out like this example, the proposed Aldi store in Taft Corners, where the single-story grocery store is balanced by a multi-story future building with the calculation of the 60% upper-floor stories coming from the two upper stories of the future building, but allowing a large single-story building to be constructed. Another element of building height discussed during public testimony was the desire to allow some flexibility for some single-story buildings and the argument that those can be an effective part of a walkable downtown as evidenced by the picture of Main Street for Virens on the left. Williston's experience with single-story development looks more like the picture on the right with the constructed PetSmart and REI buildings and the Lot 26 concept plan as proposed to the town a few years ago with single-story multi-tenant retail and single-tenant retail parking lot in front and driving access 360 degrees around the building. So we'll have some questions for the Planning Commission during the work session about whether single-story buildings should be allowed anywhere within the Form-Based Code overlay district and how, including discussion of the idea of allowing those buildings south of Marshall Avenue only. Our next topic is building footprint size. We've had some testimony that building footprints could be made larger, which would allow for some more flexibility. And based on those discussions, staff does recommend considering increasing the building footprint from 15,000 or 18,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet in the form areas where that limitation exists. That will not undermine the other building form or architectural standards in the opinion of staff. So during our work session, we'll ask you a question about changing the maximum allowed building footprint. Topic number six is parking. We've spent a lot of time talking about parking throughout this process and staff wanted to provide some facts to dispel a few myths about the Form-Based Code and how it addresses parking. In this example, a one-bedroom apartment has a minimum parking requirement of 1.25 spaces, and there is no total maximum parking requirement. If a developer wants to build single-bedroom units and provide two or more spaces per unit, that can be done through a mixture of shared and reserved parking and surface and structured parking. And here's a commercial example, a 2,500-square-foot pizza restaurant. Again, there's no minimum reserved parking requirement or minimum shared parking requirement and no minimum required parking. However, there's a maximum reserved parking requirement of two spaces with no maximum for shared parking and no maximum for total parking. Keep in mind that maximum surface parking standards apply to surface parking only and do not include structured basement, on-street, or underground parking. By way of example, the existing pizzeria in the Cottonwood Crossing development does not have any reserved parking. It utilizes shared parking along with residential and eventually other commercial tenants. A statement was made in the testimony that the Form-Based Code would require 40% of parking spaces in larger parking lots be dedicated to the public. The 30 spaces and 40% metric does exist within the code, but it's not about requiring the spaces. In fact, if a parking lot is larger than 30 spaces and has 40% or more of its spaces dedicated to the public, it receives an incentive of being able to keep its curb cuts onto a street rather than being required to be served by an alley. So the question for the Planning Commission about parking is a simple one. Is there anything about the parking requirements in the draft Form-Based Code that should be changed?
The seventh topic for the Planning Commission to consider are questions and concerns about the Essex Alliance Church property, where Chris Snyder is considering a residential development. Mr. Snyder's testimony can be read in the minutes and watched in the Zoom recording videos. A formal comment letter was not received and therefore not linked in this presentation. During the hearing, there were questions raised about the timing of Chris Snyder's application and the development of the Form-Based Code. The Planning Commission may recall in December of 2020 having their first meet-and-greet with Jeff Farrell Associates as a precursor to kicking off the vision process and Form-Based Code drafting. The Planning Director, Matt Belanger, had a preliminary phone call with Mr. Snyder about EAC in December of 2020. And Mr. Snyder had stakeholder meetings with Jeff Farrell and Associates in March and April of 2021. He also attended the Work in Progress event, which was the closeout of our two-week charrette process in the spring of '21. In July, the vision plan was published. And then in August, a pre-application was filed for the Essex Alliance property, and the DRB hearing was held on September 14th. When comparing the Essex Alliance Concept Plan to our regulating plan, I do notice that some of the main grid streets are similar, where it connects from Dunmore Lane across Alpine Drive near the SCCU and Bodry Lane to Route 2A. You'll notice that Mr. Snyder's plan, the streets are more curvilinear and meandering, while the regulating plan follows a straight, gridded pattern. Though there are some similarities between Mr. Snyder's Concept Plan and the regulating plan, there are some critical differences that make the regulating plan more realistic. For example, the Concept Plan shows buildings within slopes of 15 to 30%. The paths through the wetland would need to get state approval. And this half-moon-shaped traffic circle is probably not to Public Works specifications. I also noted that the Concept Plan appears greener than is realistic. Each of these red dots shows a tree trunk where a tree is proposed on the edge of a curb, along driveways or right in front of a driveway, or even in the middle of the street, as seen here on the right side. And this graphic also shows that half-moon traffic circle intersection. Without a cohesive block and alleyway pattern, there will be individual driveway curb cuts onto the streets. The red dashes in the right image show driveways for single and duplex units on the Essex Alliance Concept Plan. I count nearly 100 individual driveways. The Concept Plan does have some similarities. These black dashes are parking lot alleyways, which is something that the Form-Based Code pulls for, where parking and access is cohesive to the rear of the building. The image shows front-loaded townhomes where units have driveways side by side with a small green strip in between. This creates challenges for snow storage and snow removal, whereas an alleyway pattern creates more cohesive areas for plowing and snow storage. The Essex Alliance application has received pre-application approval. In our bylaw, pre-application is when projects aren't presented in an informal way that invites comment and discussion of alternatives. It is neither approved nor rejected, and it creates no vested rights. Rather, at pre-application, the DRB is just voting on a set of recommendations. The staff report from the September 14th hearing calls out the upcoming Form-Based Code and notes that the development standards may be very different. A project is not vested until a complete discretionary permit is submitted. And it was anticipated in this discussion that subsequent amendments to the Essex Alliance property may be subject to the Form-Based Code. The Historic and Architectural Advisory Committee, HAC, and the DRB had differing opinions about the street layout for this site plan. The HAC, having recently reviewed the vision plan that was just published at the time, was not convinced that the meandering layout contributed to the goals for a walkable pedestrian-friendly neighborhood. The HAC recommended to consider smaller blocks and a regular pattern of gridded streets. The DRB struck that recommendation and instead wrote that the meandering layout was aesthetically pleasing and provided traffic calming. This shows that without a regulating plan dictating the specific location of streets and parks, that the DRB and Historic and Architectural Advisory Committee can undermine some of those goals of walkability in the growth center. Essex Alliance, as proposed, a 55-acre property with about 270 units, will develop over several years, five to 10 years at least, if not more. While it may be possible for the first phase to obtain vesting under the current zoning before Form-Based Code is adopted, it was clear in the pre-application staff report that subsequent amendments and phases would be subject to the Form-Based Code. Staff does not recommend vesting in a concept approval. The devil's in the details as discussed above related to trees, street layouts, steep slopes, et cetera. We recommend either including or excluding the Essex Alliance property from the Form-Based Code overlay district. The question for the Planning Commission to consider is should Essex Alliance be included or excluded from the Form-Based Code overlay district? If it is included, while the first phase might be able to make it through under the current bylaws, the subsequent amendments would be subject to the Form-Based Code. If it is excluded from the overlay district, then the existing zoning standards will apply, and you can anticipate a development pattern similar to other residential subdivisions in the Taft Corners area. The last question for the Planning Commission to consider for Essex Alliance is if the regulating plan should be amended as shown. The red areas denote additional developable area that was discussed at prior hearings, along Alpine Drive near the greens and along the single-loaded streets and near the Allenbrook Buffer to create more maneuvering room and developable area. Topic eight for the Planning Commission to consider are the questions and concerns related to Cottonwood Crossing and La Piere lands. These properties are owned by Allenbrook Development. Some of the concerns were related to the street layout and block sizes on the regulating plan, building height and footprint size. There were also some technical questions raised in Mr. Senical's letter, and staff has responded to those on March 8th. Cottonwood Crossing has a lengthy timeline. In 2007, it was first proposed by Allenbrook Development. It received allocation but didn't construct for several years. It returned in 2015 to renew the permit process and again in 2019 to revise some of the phases to include Community Bank. Of the five phases in Cottonwood Crossing, one has built out completely, the lands near Community Bank and the apartment building with Junior's Pizza. Across the street, another building is actively under construction, while two buildings have yet to start construction. Phases three, four, and five have vesting in their building footprints and street layout. However, the architectural and site details have not yet been permitted. At the past few hearings, there have been questions about the developable acreage within Cottonwood Crossing and La Piere under the proposed Form-Based Code. Jeff Farrell ran an analysis, about 60 acres total for these lands, 13.3 acres around the Burr Oak Knoll, 22.8 in the perimeter natural areas, which includes the wetland buffer. The bright teal is the building blocks where structures and parking are allowed, and that totals about 27.9 acres. The street space shown in white on this part of town is 17 acres. Keep in mind that the street spaces includes private area of the front yard door lawns as well as sidewalks and wide tree lawns. I'd like to note that the street specifications proposed here are not dissimilar from the current specifications in town today. For example, the Public Works specs today call for 64 feet of right-of-way. The streets in the La Piere area are about 66 and 64 feet of right-of-way. And then the streets proposed around the green will be one-way where the curb-to-curb distance is 29 feet. So this acreage would not be dissimilar to what's built today under the current Public Works specification. This plan shows the La Piere lands, which are now owned by Allenbrook Development. It includes the Burr Oak Knoll and was proposed for subdivision in 2005 by La Piere. This map shows the wetlands delineation at that time. This plan is La Piere's concept from 2005. You'll notice meandering streets without a gridded pattern of blocks, cul-de-sacs. Some of these streets are either not loaded on either side by structures or only loaded on one side by a parking lot. This slide shows the 2005 wetlands delineation for the La Piere land with Cottonwood Crossing overlay to get a sense of scale. As a reminder, here is Route 2. Here is the entrance street by Community Bank and Junior's Pizza. The regulating plan is shown here overlaid on the La Piere wetlands delineation from 2005. You can see where the regulating plan wraps around the Burr Oak Knoll and provides parks on an east-west orientation to give views to the Green Mountains. This regulating plan was drawn based on the state's wetlands map, which is a very approximate map and sometimes not as accurate as to show the full extent of wetlands that may exist in the field. Which brings us to our staff recommendation to keep the regulating plan as shown here. The state and local wetland regulations may preclude development to the extent that is shown on the regulating plan for the La Piere property. And when the landowner is ready to begin the permitting process and receives an updated wetlands delineation, then the Planning Commission should engage in a legislative amendment to change the block, street, and park layout for this area of town. This brings us to the question for the Planning Commission. Should the regulating plan be revised for the Cottonwood Crossing and La Piere lands? On the left, you see the original regulating plan that was warned for public hearing. On the right is what was discussed during the hearing. The red areas are concept brainstorm ideas for additional developable area along the streets and reconfiguring the streets on the south side of the Burr Oak Knoll. The ninth topic for the Planning Commission to consider are comments and concerns from Taft Corners Associates about the Taft Corners Commercial Park. I've linked here the comment letters from Jeff Davis and Jeff Nick, as well as their Concept Plan, which is shown on the right, for lands along Trader Lane and Merchant's Row. To orient, this grocery store is the future potential Aldi as well as the rear of Hannaford. And this is the CVS and Lot 30 parking lots. Some of their concerns are listed on this slide. Taft Corners Commercial Park was subdivided in 1986 and included 38 original lots with frontage along Route 2A, Williston Road, Harvest Lane, and Marshall Ave. The majority of stores were constructed in the 1990s, including Walmart, Home Depot, PetSmart, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, et cetera. To date, there are no residential buildings constructed in this area. There are questions about the land south of Marshall Ave. This image is a screenshot of the interactive map. The yellow line shows the Form-Based Code overlay district area. The lands to the south are outside of that overlay, including Food Science, Walmart, and Home Depot. The light purple indicates the mixed-use commercial zoning district boundaries. Lands within the overlay district include the Harvest Lane Loop and primarily Lot 26, located between PetSmart and REI within the Taft Corners zone. The existing zoning bylaws for Taft Corners and mixed-use commercial zoning districts have the five-of-nine and three-of-eight criteria. These criteria encourage multiple uses, a wrap of smaller shops for retail spaces larger than 20,000 square feet, and multiple stories. These standards discourage single-story and single-tenant retail. Buildings like Walmart, Home Depot, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, which were constructed in the 1990s, would not be approvable under the existing zoning standards. In 2009, Williston adopted the Unified Development Bylaws, which merged the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations and adopted new design review criteria. Since 2009, only three properties have been developed by Taft Corners Associates. This includes Town Fair Tire in 2015, CVS Pharmacy in 2010, as well as Lot 30, where the Panera and Verizon stores are located, in 2010. Those three lots are shown in teal. The lands that are shown with the light red hatch are properties that were developed prior to 2009, and the light green hatch is lands that have yet to be developed. The darker green are some of those natural areas around a tributary. The next few slides all focus on Lot 26, which is located south of PetSmart and west of the REI Marshall's Building, highlighted here on these site plans. A site plan was proposed in 2003 with a 40,000-square-foot single-retail building. This site plan shows Harvest Lane, Retail Way, and an extension of Trader Lane with this building the formerly known as AC Moore. Buildings A and B with their pocket park were a concept only at that proposal. You'll see these architectural elevations that shows three-story buildings with some shop fronts on the ground level. The 2003 plan didn't come to fruition, and another permitting attempt took place in 2015, this time under the current developments standards. The lower right shows a multi-tenant commercial building with parking lot between the building and Retail Way and another standalone restaurant or commercial space near the AC Moore. This pre-application was continued, and another concept was shown that cut off Retail Way and put another retail space adjacent to PetSmart. The top right is an aerial rendering of what that building footprint and parking lot would look like in context of the surroundings. Footprint size and context are very important for single-story buildings. When we think about a single-story building in an urban context, it generally has a smaller footprint or is directly adjacent to a multi-story building, like the Virens example we discussed above. The pedestrian experience is also quite different for a small footprint, small-height, single-story building and a retail business that is one story but has a very tall facade. The DRB struggled with the pre-application for Lot 26 in 2015. This excerpt shows where the applicant pushed back on some of the five-of-nine criteria and asked for more flexibility. A number of the board members did not feel the proposal fit with the bylaws and town plan. The hearing was continued to June, and the DRB approved a list of recommendations, including some recommendations about having buildings on both sides of the street to form a streetscape and create a more urban feel, a recommendation about the pocket park and sidewalks along both sides of the new streets. A discretionary permit was never filed with this application, and the lot is still vacant. The Planning Commission should consider this question. Should single-story buildings be allowed south of Marshall Ave? Should more land be excluded from the Form-Based Code overlay district? The options are: A, leave the building heights and overlay boundary as is. The options are, A, leave the building heights and overlay boundary as is. B, yes, by excluding lands south of Marshall Ave. From the form-based code overlay district. That would mean moving this pink line, the overlay boundary. To include additional land such as Lots twenty-six or the Harvest Lane Loop. And the third option would be yes, by allowing some single-story buildings throughout the district with restrictions. The Planning Commission should consider this question. Should single-story buildings be allowed south of Marshall Ave? Should more land be excluded from the form-based code overlay district? The options are, A, leave the building heights and overlay boundary as is. B, yes, by excluding lands south of Marshall Ave. From the form-based code overlay district. That would mean moving this pink line, the overlay boundary. To include additional land such as Lots twenty-six or the Harvest Lane Loop. And the third option would be yes, by allowing some single-story buildings throughout the district with restrictions. An additional question from Taft Corners Associates is about the location of the Trader Lane Green on the regulating plan. The streets around the green are designed to align with the back of Resource and the Hannaford Drive aisle. It also takes into consideration the topography as land slopes downhill towards the west along Harvest Lane. The majority of the green is shown on Taft Corners Associates' property. With the green and streets splitting right along the boundary between Taft Corners Land and Reichelt. The Reichelt property are two lots of about five acres. That are currently undeveloped between Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and Resource. Shifting the green further to the west would add more jogs into the intersections around the green and consume more land. The question for the Planning Commission is, should the Trader Lane Green be adjusted? Between the Taft Corners Associates and Reichelt Properties? A, no, leave the green as is on the regulating plan. B, shift, yes, shift the Trader Lane Green to the west to split it more evenly between TCA and Reichelt Properties. Or C, you have another idea to discuss in the discussion.
Our tenth topic is related to the regulating plan and the official map. We wanted to begin by talking about the underlying principles of the regulating plan, which creates the pattern of three hundred and thirty to four hundred and forty-foot-long. Walkable blocks. These blocks are very important to the pedestrian friendliness of the Taft Corners area.
The regulating plan, and to some extent the official map, were developed with several different data sets and constraints in mind. Such as existing streets and public right-of-way. Parcel boundaries for every individual piece of land in the Growth Center. Steep slopes and wetlands, local conservation areas. Utilities and Velco transmission lines. And the difference between state highways and local roads. Today, Route two and two A are state highways maintained by the Agency of Transportation. Without a regulating plan, developers and the DRB can make changes that undermine walkability and pedestrian-friendly grid streets. Over the next few flo- few slides, I'll use Finney Crossing as a case study. This image s- shows the two thousand and five concept plan for Finney Crossing. For this review, I'm just gonna focus on the commercial portion of the development, uh, not the residential portion. I will note that the two thousand and five concept plan did include an amphitheater where letter B is shown. Finney Crossing actually began as a concept plan in two thousand and three and got some approvals in two thousand and five. At that time, there were several greens shown, an amphitheater, a pocket park. A central quote town public common, as well as public open space along the Route two to Frontage. But at the time, the town did not have an official map. Um, which is the most authority a town can have to determine the location of public streets and public spaces. Finney Crossing received approval under the current bylaws in two thousand and eleven. The concept plan for the open space changed. Where an amphitheater was once shown is now an open green. The pocket park remains, as does the central common and the green space, Lot C one. At the north. Between two thousand and eleven and twenty twenty seventeen, the residential component of Fin- Finney Crossing built out. March two thousand and seventeen was the last time that Finney Crossing participated in growth management review. To adjust their allocation schedule. At that time, the commercial development changed layout once again. Now, three greens remained, a pocket park, the central common, and the common green. A few months later, in November two thousand and seventeen, Finney Crossing came back to the Development Review Board. This time to significantly reconfigure the street and park layout to accommodate the Hilton Home Two Suites Hotel. Shown here on the site plan. In the past slide, you noticed that this intersection came into a T around the green. That was changed, and the green shrunken size from about one and a half acres. To the third of an acre shown here, and a handful of pocket parks. The open green along two was replaced by Building F, the parking lot for um the Healthy Living Building. And where Folino's is today. The Historic and Architectural Advisory Committee really struggled with this pre-application. As shown by their list of recommendations here, where they couldn't decide about the Kerr Street configuration. Some members did not agree with the removal of the T intersection. And there was quite a bit of discussion about the adequacy of the park size. The DRB ultimately struck this recommendation entirely about the configuration of streets and public space. Fast forward to two thousand and nineteen, and the hotel was constructed. This site plan um is marked up with Sharpie by Jeff Speck, an urban designer and walkability expert. When he visited Williston in two thousand and nineteen. You can see where he shows buildings rather than being fronted on Route two. Fronted along the smaller, slower streets of Holland Lane and Market Street. You can also see where the smaller community green lies, um, that was once the larger common.
A few final thoughts on the regulating plan and the official map. Most planners know this quote by Daniel Burnham, and many people have heard the first part. Make no little plans, they have no magic to stir men's blood, and probably themselves will not be realized. It's a quote about making big, grand, or courageous plans for the future. But in relationship to the Taft Corners Plan, this is my favorite part of the quote. That a noble, logical diagram once recorded will never die, but long after we are gone be a living thing. Asserting itself with ever-growing insistancy. The regulating plan enabled by the official map sets a walkable, pedestrian-friendly, human-scaled, mixed-use diverse. Pattern for future development in Taft Corners. And once that pattern is established, it will continue to assert itself with ever-growing insistancy. As the area grows and changes into the future. This brings us to our question about regulating plan and official map. Amending the regulating plan and official map to move or remove a street or a public green called for by those documents. Is currently drafted as a legislative act that must be reviewed by the Planning Commission and ultimately the Select Board. The Planning Commission has heard testimony from landowners and stakeholders that they would like either an expanded administrative process to move or remove those elements. Or a process that allows that movement or removal to happen by application to the DRB. The question for the Planning Commission is what their level of agreement is with the current way the bylaw is drafted. Where changing the regulating plan and official map is a legislative rather than an administrative or quasi-judicial act. Finally, we're providing the Planning Commission with this slide, which summarizes written testimony and comments received by the commission throughout the public hearing process. Having had the opportunity to review the written testimony given during the three public hearings. Does the Planning Commission have any other issues that they would like to discuss? Before voting on a transmittal draft of the form-based code to the Select Board? Having had the opportunity to review the written testimony given during the three public hearings. Does the Planning Commission have any other issues that they would like to discuss? Before voting on a transmittal draft of the form-based code to the Select Board?